A call to order the Cohasset Planning Board for October eleventh, twenty twenty-three alphabetical road calls. Just now I'm first, Tom Callahan is here.
Amy Glassmeyer.
Hi.
Andrew Hobson here.
And also with us are town planner Cassandra Thayer and our town council Carolyn Murray. Um, we only have one official item on the agenda, continued public hearing for ninety-four black horse lanes. Well, it's promote whoever we need to promote.
Adam, if I'm missing anybody other than yourself, Carmen and Nino, just let me know.
Thank you, Ms. There. Chair Callahan, can I begin?
Um. Well, I guess, yeah, Mr. Reif will be with us, but I thought I was, I was going to start with his, uh, his updated report of October sixth. Did everybody on the board get a chance to read that? So, all right, but, uh, yeah, uh, if you want to do a sh- a short opening presentation, that's fine.
Oh, I'll be very short. Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm a local land use and environmental attorney, and I represent KD Custom Homes LLC. Nino Dunono is the principal of KD Custom Homes is with us, as well as Carmen Hudson, our registered professional engineer. And the board had continued this hearing to this date to allow sufficient time for us to complete the peer review process. And as of October sixth, twenty twenty-three, which was, I believe, the last written submittal by Weston and Sampson, there were only a handful of remaining outstanding issues. We had satisfied the majority of Weston and Sampson's concerns. Ms. Hudson has been working with, uh, Weston and Sampson to address those last remaining issues. Uh, we believe that we have the resolution of those issues. Um, and tho- those, uh, can be conditioned. So it's our hope that the planning board will be in a position this evening to close the public hearing and condition the project based upon those resolutions. Uh, and I know Ms. Hudson is prepared to go through, uh, the peer review comments um, and address the outstanding issues, if that's appropriate.
And I, I don't want to burst your bubble, but, uh, I, I see from Weston and Sampson's report, we still require input from the water department, the sewer department, and I think the fire department, which we do not have.
I thought we got fire.
Maybe we got fire. I don't know. I haven't seen.
We got fire.
You did get.
We got fire.
All right.
Do we have, do we have comments from the comments from the, from the Conservation Commission?
I don't.
And why, why wouldn't we be sending our engineering diagrams back to the Conservation Commission since a lot of the i- issues are related to water? Why, why wouldn't we? And, and proximity to uh, wetlands? So why wouldn't we be expecting to send that back?
Our standard practice would be subject to our decision on future permitting with other boards, including CONCOM. I saw a reference to a stormwater permit in Weston and Sampson's report that I presume they're going to need. But, um, my apologies if I haven't read, if I received the fire department thing or it's posted on our site and I haven't read it yet, but I don't believe I've seen anything from the sewer commission and the water commission, so. Um, the, the other thing, I mean, you've asked, you've asked for a number of waivers that we're going to have to discuss one by one uh, as to whether we're going to do it, because I also read the report of you know, not making any, it's not Weston and Sampson's place to make a recommendation on waivers, but, you know, there's a number of them that we still need to consider one way or the other.
Again, we, we can address all those issues and, uh, we're prepared to do so.
All right, well, they're not here, so I was going to have them go through this, but so let's, let's, let's start right in. Um, the first place where, again, again, and I don't have, but it didn't print out in color, and I know they had totally coded responses, but what I first seen.
Do you have your phone?
I'm sorry? What was that? Who's, who said something? Oh, okay.
My mistake, so.
No, okay, thank you. Um. On page three of their letter of the six, uh, the first place I'm seeing. Okay, these, all those things that had to be on the plan, those are there, okay? Um.
Chair Callahan, you, no, no, they, they resolved that by saying that the revised plan addressed these drawings.
Yes, I'm seeing, I'm, yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right, page four, I'm seeing that.
We're losing you, Tom.
I'm sorry, the page four, we have some issues that still need to be addressed. Regarding seeing that we have stormwater calculations and water analysis, and then it's the first bullet on that page. Recommend that can address on the set. All right, so, so, you know, want to comment on these as you go, please do.
Yeah, Chair Callahan, I, I could not hear you, so we're having some problem with the transmission. And, and, and again, if I might suggest, Carmen's prepared to go through the peer review report item by item, if you wish, and address all of those outstanding items. And, and maybe that's the easier way to do it, rather than, uh, we're happy to follow your lead.
No, I'm good with it, go ahead. Go ahead, Tom.
Good evening. Um, so let me, uh, go through the items in the letter. Um. Yeah, maybe I should. Okay. Article four, definitive plan, uh, there are no further comments. That is, as Mr. Callahan said on page three, article five, design standards. Uh, the original comment was stormwater calculations were provided in support of the project design. We offer the following comments related to the stormwater report and associated design. Uh, the recommendation.
Good, good, back, back, the first one on article five, the board may wish to consider whether this is oh, we have an issue with the size of the cul-de-sac. Now, do I read that correctly, that we're proposing a larger planting island than would be required? Is that how I interpreted that?
So the, the, the island is smaller, I'm sorry, it's larger than the than the island that is required per the regulations. Um, the, the width of the pavement is twenty feet and it can, um, provide access to the, the ladder truck from the Cohasset Fire Department. So what this does is it still provides sufficient paved area for maneuvering, but it reduces the amount of pavement considerably.
Not sure I'm understanding what you're saying, right? This is talking about the radius of the planting island. Are you providing something that's larger than required? Yes or no?
Yes, so the, the island is larger than required.
Okay, and the pavement around the cul-de-sac is how, how wide at the point of the cul-de-sac?
I believe it's fifty feet of pavement.
I should note there are some typos in the, uh, document from the fire department.
Well, such as what, Amy? Amy?
Yes, if we're going to act on a document, we would like to have it's, uh, grammatically correct, isn't that right?
All right, we're talking about the cul-de-sac.
Yes, I know that.
What is the width of the pavement around this planting island?
It's twenty feet.
And the fire department have a comment on that in particular?
The fire department has commented, they provided a letter, and they, they received us a sketch from us with, uh, turning radius for their, uh, ladder apparatus, and they did not have any opposition to that. Um, Cassandra, I don't know if, uh, you could share the fire department's letter?
Um. I could, it would take me a little bit to bring it up, um.
Uh, I'm, I'm looking at it, 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 it doesn't even address this particular point, it's it, I mean, their general, their general comment is that they believe it's going to be sufficient for their apparatus. They will do a test drive with their largest vehicle. And then they have some comments about uh, the hydrant, but again, and also referring just to the water department, that we're going to need to get comments from the water department, so. All right, um. All right, Carmen, people go on. I mean, I don't know what the board's thought about that is, about the planting island, if it's larger than what's being required, I imagine that's a good thing, not a bad thing, so. All right.
So. So what I, what I did was highlight the, the recommendations by Weston and Sampson for the items that they were, that the comments that were still outstanding. So for the stormwater calculations, uh, they recommended the addition of a separator row as a condition of approval. We certainly, um, are amenable to, to add that, uh, separator row, um. They also asked that for, mm-hmm. So they also asked that for water, water quality treatment, so that is water quality t- treatment of the existing road that we request a waiver. We only need to treat the existing road to the maximum extent practicable, so as, uh, as, um, an answer to another one of Weston and Sampson's comments, we were proposing to add a catch basin to the existing runoff way to provide some treatment, and I think that would answer this, uh, request for a waiver. Uh, then this comment that is outstanding has to do with providing catch basins every four hundred feet. And they, um, it says it appears potentially viable for the applicant to provide catch basins and pipe along the segment of the road that is the existing segment of the road, and they refer to, um, that's the existing, uh, segment of, uh, existing road that is lower than the rest around elevation nineteen point five, and I can show you that in the plan. Um, yeah, let me, so their recommendation was to add a catch basin and pipe along this section, and, you know, in order to collect some of the existing runoff and direct it towards the salt marsh. Um, we would not be sending anything directly to the salt marsh, and I'm sorry, I don't know if I am, um, sharing my screen.
You're not.
I'm not, no, so let me, um, let me shift my screen. So. Another one of their comments was talking about adding a catch basin around this area, which is, um, all of this existing, uh, roadway flows in this direction towards number seventy, uh, eighty and nine, but primarily towards number seventy. Um, so what we're proposing to do as, which was a recommendation by Weston and Sampson, was to put a catch basin in this area, so there would be a berm here, a catch basin here close to this uh, sewer service cover at elevation nineteen point five. And that would be the catch basin and pipe that they were requesting. So what that would do is it would direct some of the runoff in this direction, because the outlet would be in this direction, and it would, um, it will also provide some treatment. So, if I may continue.
Well, where, where are the catch basins that you are providing?
So, so this is something that they mentioned in this letter, which we received yesterday. Um. Put these buttons here. So this is a letter that we received yesterday, um, and here. Uh, so if, um, if I may just bypass this for one second, because we're going to get into that recommendation for a catch base, uh, actually. No, this is, this is the the, the comment that recommends to have a catch basin and pipe along the segment of road. There, this is the segment of road that they're referring to, the low point in the existing private way approximately three hundred and twenty-five feet south of its connection to the public way, labeled with elevation nineteen point five. Yeah, which is, which is this one right here. So we agreed to add a catch basin here, um, as per recommendation.
There any others? Because the comment further up is that we're supposed to have one every four hundred feet.
Well, with, with, so with that, that is, so with that, we would be providing a catch basin, which is about three hundred and fifty feet away. Then this catch basin, which we're proposing, is, um, I'm sorry, this catch basin would be less than four hundred feet away from that, and then we're proposing this other catch basin, which is also less than four hundred feet from that. So with that, we would be satisfying that requirement.
Amy, did you have your hand up or Kevin?
Um, yeah, I, I did. I, I would, wanted to say that I find the comments by the, uh, assistant fire uh, professional is inadequate. And the reason I say that is because we can't, we can't ha- hold up an applicant and, and, and tell a project is completed and without them having something more definitive than what they've written now. And, and so I personally think that, that that has to be redone.
All right, well, we, we, we have to frame some questions to the sewer commission and to the water commission based on Weston and Sampson's comments, so if you want to, if you want to, if you want to suggest framing some specific further questions to the fire department, feel free to transfer.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
Yeah, just with regard to this catch basin, and I'm hearing it would collect at an elevation of nineteen point five. It looks like the surrounding contour shows an elevation higher than that, so it would be successful in catching runoff in that basin. But I am, um, at complete loss to know where um, that basin would vacate the water that it collects to at what distance away and at what elevation and how it would do that. I don't see any of that on the plan. I don't think the plan was modified to show that. Can the applicant opine on any of that?
So, these are comments that we received yesterday. Um, originally, we simply received the comment of provide, you know, try to provide a catch basin every four hundred feet. When we when we designed this road, we were providing catch basins every four hundred feet, beginning at the extension of the road. Not, not counting the existing road. Um, so that is what we said in our letter. However, there was still the same comment about providing a catch basin every four hundred feet and in, in the interest of closing the hearing, we, we are agreed to add one, but this, once again, this is responding to a letter that we got yesterday.
No, that's fine and duly noted. I just don't see how us as a board can see resolution of that issue at this point in time with no design for it and no explanation of the solution for it. I'll leave it at that, and I appreciate the response, and if you could carry on, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chair Callahan, I, I should note that that catch basin will lead to an infiltration basin that will be have, be located on the, and that would be the western side of the road. So in answer to Mr. Heinz's question, um, that catch basin would lead to an infiltration basin.
Okay, which will need to be shown on that plan. And where is the other one going? The other catch basin? Where is that discharging to?
So both this catch basin, which are on the plan, they, they have not changed. Uh, they are still discharging into this infiltration system.
Okay.
And to have outlet pipes.
Okay.
So, um, the next lesser, the next outstanding comment uh, is regarding the minimum storm drain size of twelve inches, that is for the pipes, and we were proposing ten inches. Uh, we provided that yesterday as well. Once again, we received this yesterday. However, once again, in the interest of closing the hearing, we let, um, we sent an email to Cassandra and there at, you know, Weston and Sampson, uh, letting them know that we would change the, the pipes to twelve inch RCP types three as well as the head walls in order to minimize the number of waivers and, um, address all of the, all of the comments. So the ten inch, uh, ADS pipes, I did model them, I sent the calculations yesterday. However, we're willing to change that to twelve inch RCP, and then therefore this waiver would be gone. Um, another outstanding waiver um, has to do with, uh, six inch diameter cast iron, um, ductile iron pipe that we're proposing. And once again, we will change that, um, the proposed pipe to call for the required eight inch ductile iron pipe. We have not received any, uh, recommendations from the water department. So we will just, uh, change it so that we will not need this waiver any longer. We were just trying to match the existing water main, but, um, but once again, we will change it in order to be, you know.
All right, go back, go back before that bullet. The issue about a concrete head wall and um, and I, you want to use HDP pipe?
Uh, once again, we would remove all of the HDP, so no ADS pipes, it would just be RCP pipes and the concrete head wall. That way we can remove all of those waivers.
Great. What was the type of pipe?
I'm sorry?
What was the type of pipe?
Oh, it's, it's the required pipe, which is, uh, reinforced concrete pipe type three.
Okay. All right.
So, look, can I just ask the applicant here, it was no thought as to meeting these requirements put into this submittal in its initial preparation in submittal to the town?
So, this is Carmen, let me handle that. Um, this is Adam Brodsky. You may remember the discussion we had regarding the rather antiquated standards that exist within your subdivision regulations. And so we had proposed more modern and best practices. Uh, you had asked us to come back and justify the waivers. We actually provided that additional information, justifying the waivers. But again, to simplify the process, we're willing to use the reinforced concrete pipe instead of the modern materials um, in order simply to reduce the number of waivers to make this easier for the planning board. Um, in terms of functionality, uh, we demonstrated in our prior submittals, if you have read them, that, uh, that what we're proposing was equivalent, if not better, than some of these older standard materials. But again, to reduce the number of waivers, we're providing this material. So hopefully that, that answers your question.
Well, it does, Attorney Brodsky, and I have read the submittal, and I will say perhaps these items are of a cheaper cost point than the ones that are required, okay? Or it may have been easier to take something off a shelf that was already written a certain way and then turn the numbered, the required, you know, fill in the blanks so that it could be used as a submittal here. So with all due respect.
Yes, sir.
Um, I just find it a little offensive, your response, and I'll just, you know, just trying to get an answer as to why there is a request for so many different waivers here. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, sir, and, and the, the cost of the reinforced concrete pipe is more than the materials that we had specified. So I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Darren, I see you're here.
Yes, and apologies for my delay. Um. I did just want to flag, as we're going through some of these, uh, the green items are the ones that we had no further technical comment on, which included the HPE pipe, so it's on the page before this, Carmen. We're able to scroll up to page five. Yeah, in the center here, that, you know, we have no further comments, and the, the board had asked us to look at, you know, if, if the bylaw um, for subdivisions was antiquated in terms of materials, and the HPE was an acceptable um, material, so it, and it's fine that the applicant is eliminating that waiver and using what's in the bylaw, but I did want to just flag that we did review, as the board requested, those material types, and in this case um, had no comment on or objection to the HPE being used. And I do have a slide deck of this same information.
I, I mean, you know, that brings up that even as we're, you know, upgrading our zoning bylaw for the first time comprehensively in thirty-plus years, we might at some point, take a look at our subdivision regs. We don't get a lot of subdivision work. Uh, you know, depending on what we do with the bylaw, we might, but in the future, so I think, you know, it's just put in the back of all of our minds that we might want to have an engineering look at our bylaw and our subdivision regs and see if they're up to snuff uh, in today's world. Uh, who else? All right, yeah, go ahead, Dan. You wanted to continue with something? Go ahead.
Are you, so that's me?
I'm sorry.
No, Da- Darren, are you, you all set or in a moment?
I'm all set. I guess I did want to flag, I have a, a slide deck of basically the same, just all the open comments. So if, if you prefer the applicants to run through them, that's fine too, so either, either option.
Yeah, well, we, we, we started, we started when we were just, go on, and if, if they skip over something, I'm trying to catch them, but.
Okay, thank you.
Amy, was there something you wanted to?
Yeah, I, I, um, I note that the applicant is indicating to us that they just got the information yesterday. We require for ourselves five days or, or a week, depending upon how we want to define it. And so what we're hearing now is that they want to close the meeting, therefore they're being accommodating. Whereas I would much rather that they have more time to consider the things we said, consider what Weston and Sampson said, and then make a suggested determination. I feel like it's kind of, I, it, it feels like I'm talking to somebody that just wants to get something done when this, in fact, is a complicated environment with a lot of issues associated with water and transit and property, et cetera. And if they've only seen it on one day, and not even maybe a day, maybe they got it at noon, I, I want to dis- dissuade them from the belief that we're going to just close the meeting. It makes me feel.
I don't, Amy, as I said at the beginning, I don't think we're closing the meeting. I'm trying to disabuse them of that notion, so, um, I don't think we're going to be prepared to do that, but let them go through this, because they're, as we're sitting here, they're chopping down the number of waivers that we have to debate about, so. All right. In fact, back on page five, Weston and Sampson, I think the next point is about the sewer main. And then, you know, again, I don't think anybody has input of the sewer department at this point. Darren, is there anything in particular about the sewer main? Is two, two inches sufficient? Is not sufficient? Or is it something we just really pump to the sewer department and they tell us what's the appropriate size?
We did recommend just confirming with the sewer department, which I believe the applicant is in the process of doing, but, um.
Cassandra, can you, can you make a note that we got to get a memo out to the sewer department tomorrow about that?
Already done.
Okay. All right, um.
I'm sorry, Chair Callahan, we can't hear you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't read and speak. You know, all right, I'll pitch a great term, you know, I won't look at the screen, so, um. The next comment that I see is about the size of the storm drain. Not the size, here goes for the storm drain.
Tom, Tom, we're still not able to hear you. You're going.
I don't know what to do about that. My volume's up.
Would you like me to just read the comments?
Go ahead, Dan, please.
Okay, um, so, yeah, this comment was just related to the traffic loading on top of some of the stormwater piping. Um. Um, we did have meetings, I guess, just between this hearing and. Uh, the last hearing we had with the board, we have met with applicants, consultants, and applicant team. Um, on October fourth and uh, October, and yesterday, October tenth. Um. And I do apologize that the the timing of this uh memo. Um, certainly is, and I know been flagged as causing some concern, certainly with the the timing of what applicants looking for. Um, so on this, on this comment, we uh did discuss with the applicant requests and receive some supplemental information. Um, just on the traffic loading, just making sure that that. You know, the vehicles traversing over any of the stormwater piping is not gonna damage it. Um, so we. We will be receiving that information. Um, so that covers that item.
Does the manufacturer typically do have that kind of data? What their loads?
Yep, yep, and those are cut sheets that, and I know Carmen, you were talking with Jim, so obviously we're. A team on Weston Sampson doing a peer review, and I wasn't able to connect with you yesterday, so you spoke with Jim, and I believe. Flag that you would be providing. Either the cut sheet or it's gonna meet. You know, the loading is sufficient, or it has been in the. The loading was considered in the design of the stormwater system, is that correct?
Yes, so actually I provided those sketches yesterday, but we after speaking with Jim. Yesterday afternoon, uh, we decided to simply just change everything to the concrete pipe. Um, so even though Manzio T allows for the, the plastic pipe, and you know, we're just going to go with the concrete. All of this, all of these outstanding comments would go away. With so concrete, concrete types, R C P types three per the regulations, we took a concrete head wall.
Correct, that that's correct, yeah, this it, this PVC pipe was gonna be replaced, so yeah, this comment would no longer be applicable. Um, so yes, continuing down again, the green items we've resolved, have no further comments. Um, and then I think the last comments are generally tied to the tran- the traffic. Studies of the other road width. Um, I guess just, this is just more a comment on the rationale for the road width, so certainly there's the existing private drive. This is a subdivision where the street layout does call for forty feet of road sidewalk. Et cetera. Um, obviously, the applicant is requesting waiver, we have their rationale for why. Um, they're seeking a narrower road that, and those rationales include the the connection. Where the private road connects to also does not have sidewalks. Um. And then there, they have planned some different curbing materials with these um. Cape Cod berms to improve, I guess, the traffic flow. So, I guess. It is a waiver request for the planning boards, we just fly, you know, to the board. If this would be consistent with this part of class, it um. Certainly, there are no sidewalks immediately in this area, but as you go down to Tohazet Harbor, there are sidewalks. Um, and a wider road width. So.
Well.
That was a question to to the board.
Yeah, I mean, our select board is engaging in a project to expand and. Well, improve and then expand sidewalks in town. I don't know if this area is on their drawing board. But it also seems to be that. Unless we have a sidewalk that goes out the whole length of Black Horse Lane out to Summer Street. A sidewalk just in, within this subdivision. Uh, doesn't make much sense. And even, and by the way, I want everybody to remember, you know. It's not just these four lots we're dealing with, we're dealing with the traffic load and everything else of two or three others. Across the way. Different clients of Mr. Brodsky's, but they aren't gonna end up using this roadway. As well, so we have to be conscious of that, but nevertheless. I personally don't see. A need for a sidewalk unless we require it to go full length of Black Horse Lane.
And Chair Callahan.
And the feasibility of that would have to be looked into, because I I assume that that would require some. Or some easy.
Chair Callahan, it's Adam Brodsky. I just do wanna remind the board that we did provide a traffic analysis from Gillan Associates. Which addressed the very issue which you raised, which is not only the traffic associated. Uh, with these lots, um, but the existing lots on the private portion of Black Horse Lane, and so that's Gillan Associates. Letter of September twenty seven, twenty twenty.
Okay, now, as long, yeah, as long as those other lots are being considered and everything, that's. Amy.
Um, uh, thank you. I, I, I really appreciate both the effort on the part of the applicant. And also on the uh engineering firm. I am distressed at how the meeting has gone. And the reason is because there was no flow. We started one place, jumped someplace else, then then Carmen was asked to do something else, and. And so at this point, I have almost no idea. About what I should say and how I should feel, and this is, this is as much our fault. As it is anybody else's in this process, but just uh, just as, just as an example, we started out talking about the. The driveway turnaround. And then we moved into items which are somewhat related to water, and so I would ask. And make the following recommendation, we need a single process. We need to start at the top. Doesn't matter if we've dealt with it or not, we need to pass over it to get to the next item. We shouldn't be jumping around because there's no way to draw a conclusion, and nobody benefits from that.
Amy, we are going through Weston and Sampson's letter, page by page, point by point. Which is laid out in the logical order of the.
Tom, you don't need to tell me that, I'm looking at it, but we have made our, we keep going back. Back and forth between items adding, you know, concrete comes up in a conversation, gets put down, it's just not systematic.
I, I'm. Sorry you feel that way. Darren, continue, please.
Uh, sure, so. And I guess there, there is a relation of all this, and I mean that it is very complicated, especially the road layout in terms of. The traffic study is solely looking at vehicular traffic, there is no accounting for pedestrian traffic. Which, which goes to our next comment, which is related to the sidewalks. Um, again, the applicant has made a case, which is correct, there are no sidewalks that would connect to this dead end cul-de-sac area. Um, however, the subdivision requirements are that. The sidewalk is included, so. There's no accounting for pedestrian traffic. Um, so the waiver is for a narrow, narrower road that would account for vehicle traffic. Um, the traffic study and the calculations for four to eight. There was a discussion of a maximum of eight. Um, dwellings on the roadway um seemed accurate and consistent with what we would expect. Um, so there's not going to be significant traffic on this dead end road. Um, but again, the, the next point that we have here, if you could scroll down a little bit. Carmen was just, again, and this has been a waiver request from the beginning, so the board has seen this, this is not new. Um, that the applicant is requesting because there is no. Sidewalk currently, the challenges of putting in a sidewalk, um, considering the stormwater issues. Uh, bedrock ledge, you know, those have all been raised, so. There's certainly rationales not to put in sidewalks, but we wanted to flag, that's our next comment, and.
And and we're making no decisions on them, and the board will deliberate these, these other. You know, significant waivers that are being asked for, and so. All right, anything else you wanna point out to us, Darren?
Uh, nope, so, yeah, and then the other, I guess rationale is just the scale of this subdivision, I think is the other. Rational is that this is a, a four lot subdivision, if I'm getting this correctly, so. Um, I think the applicant is making the case that because it's. A relatively small subdivision. And general subdivisions can be quite large, um, you know, multifamily residential or. Sub- substantially larger uh developments that would warrant some like significant roadway construction with sidewalks. The scale of the project, I guess, is the rationale the applicant has provided, so we, again, we're just. Flagging that that's a reasonable argument. However, it's the planning board's jurisdiction judgment to opine on that waiver. Uh, request for the sidewalk and the associated road width.
And again, and again, this is a four lot subdivision, but a road that's gonna have access to as many as eight lots.
Correct.
Kevin.
Um, do you, do you wanna deliberate this point, Tom, or do you wanna wait till after?
Well, I'm gonna wait until then we have some public, uh, we have people from the public here who may wanna chime in.
I'll wait till then with regard to this point.
Amy. I saw your hand up again.
I will, I will wait. Uh, to have comments too.
Okay. All right, then, um. Uh, but what I'll do is it will take some public comment, and then we will summarize. What waivers are still on the table, number one, what other issues are still on the table, number two. And we can deliberate those uh with, with, with the understanding, I don't think we're going to conclude this tonight, because we certainly. Is, we want further clarification from the fire department, and we have to have input from the sewer department, so. Um, Darren, I see your hand.
Um, before you go, could you ask Cassandra to summarize where we are?
I, I, hold, hold on one second, Da- Darren, I see your hand up again.
Yeah, I just was gonna flag, we had one last comment, just within that traffic study. Again, as I mentioned, there was very, you know, few vehicle trips on this dead end road. Four to eight, I think eight was the maximum peak. Uh, trips in any given hour. Um, we had probably this before, I think at the last hearing, the applicant had noted that there will be no parking signs, so just making sure that that is. We would recommend that, um, because. Off-street parking, or sorry, on-street parking would significantly impact traffic and vehicular flow. Um, we suggested that as a condition of approval. To just make clear. There is no parking on, on that private.
That goes without saying, I think.
Yeah.
Um, you also made a comment about Cedar. Just. Hit on that for a minute.
Yeah, so that was, I mean, we, we didn't highlight in orange, cuz it was just more of a. Uh, just a parcel division, so there is a right of way that it looks, um, maybe helpful, actually pull this up. Um. Just on the existing conditions plan, the right of way of Cedar Lane extends over this proposed development, um. And just our traffic engineer had just noted that if there's development on the other side of Cedar Way, if they end up putting a cul-de-sac. In the future. Some of the offset distances might be impacted. Um. Again, that had no immediate bearing on this project, so we just flagged it as a green comment of more informational for the board. Um. Just in case there's any like active knowledge of immediate plans.
Yeah, does, can we put up the site plan for a minute?
Yes, yeah, I can share that, uh. Um, so yes, Cedar Lane. This lot for, the new lot for. Just if that was developed at these parcels.
We, we don't see the site plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, um. So at the end of the, the proposed cul-de-sac. I guess you're.
I guess, I guess my concern about this is someone in the future, you know, lot, lot four, correct me, is. Is that buildable or unbuildable?
Buildable, yeah. No, and it has setback, so it, and then I guess.
I mean, my concern is it being connected and, you know, trying to do another. Throughway, you know, from this development from Black Horse Lane into Cedar Lane.
Sure, and this is, this is Adam Brodsky, you may remember. That on the other end of Cedar Lane, there was a plan submitted for a two lot subdivision, which was denied by the planning board. And you may remember that there's a very large wetland system over that portion of Cedar Lane. And so there's a, uh, it is highly unlikely that there ever could be a connection from the. Developed portion of Cedar Lane over the undeveloped portion to somehow connect to lot number four. You can see all of the various wetland systems that are in the layout of, of that paper street.
Yeah, I know, but I, I, I never say never, I mean, would you have a problem with the condition that there can be no connection over? Lot four. From this cul-de-sac to Cedar Lane. And somebody, and somebody in the future may overlook the cause, build a bridge over the wetland, you know, or, or causeway or something, I just. I would not like, I would not like to see a potential for a throughway connection between the two roads, that's all. And that would require then saying to lot four, a condition on lot four is that there be no extension of the cul-de-sac into Cedar Lane. Ever.
And through the chair, our comment was not envisioning a throughway, but. Uh, just.
I, I know, but somebody, I, you know, again, A- Adam needs to remind me, correct, correctly reminded me about the other things, but I also remember somebody talking about. Too.
Right, and it was the, the building setback may change if this. If Cedar Lane was developed with a cul-de-sac of a similar size. Then you would, the road, I guess the road configuration could impact how lot four is developed, I guess was, was our only comment. Um, but again, that's. We, we didn't flag it as an orange comment because it's not actionable.
I'm just throwing it out, there is a concern that, you know, it is, it's not, if it's not feasible, then I wouldn't. See any objection to the condition just to take out the remote possibility, that's all. All right.
Well, it may be less remote than you think, Tom, um, bridges are built through and over wetlands all the time. I think that's a good point.
Uh, you're also, I mean, we're also assuming that the, the, uh, what we're doing is we're creating. A, a much larger mess. Basically. By not figuring out how to get these two pieces of property to speak to one another. So that they could actually do what they want to do and will uh probably present it to us at some point in the future.
Uh, Chair Callahan, we, we have no relationship to Ms. Leggett who owns that.
No, I know that, I, I know that.
We're, we're not proposing to do anything with, with her, and as I mentioned, the planning board denied a.
Uh, no, I know, I'm, I'm aware of that.
It was a common, I think it was a common driveway permit, I'm not sure it was a subdivision plan.
It was, uh, my concern is only that. Y- your, your client and its successors will control lot four. And crossing lot four would be a necessity to make a throughway between Black Horse and Cedar. And I would like to, I would suggest preventing that from ever being a possibility. Then what Ms. Leggett does. With the dead end of Cedar Lane is up to whatever she can propose, or she or her successors, yeah. All right, um, before we get to more board comment and talk about summarize what's still on the table here. I see we have a Q and A. And um, I'm also gonna ask that if anybody in the audience wishes to be promoted to speak, raise your hand. And Sandra will take care of that. But a, a Wally Sullivan is asking, the current traffic situation is untenable and dangerous, given the number of children, how is this gonna be mitigated? Um. Mr. Sullivan, do you wanna be promoted? Because I assume you're talking about. The existing public portion of Black Horse Lane, but you might wanna, you might wanna come on live and clarify that. But assuming that is the question, um. I don't know, you know. Adam or Carmen, if you wanna handle that, because again, you're. We are gonna be adding, you know, potentially eight houses. Coming down a Black Horse Lane that I think everybody agrees is inadequately sized. Oh, there's Mr. Sullivan, so let's, let's have him pose his question himself. Go ahead, if you can identify, if you can identify yourself by name and address.
Sure, my name is Wally Sullivan, eighty Black Horse Lane. And uh. We're just noticing that the, the traffic situation up and down the street now. Is uh, is, is significant. Now granted, there's been a lot of construction going on, it's been a. Uh, you gotta shut that up as well. So. I, I guess I'm just. You know, you, I, I know that, I, I missed the earlier part where the, the road coming in is gonna be extended. Or widened. Um. But again, it, do, do we think that that's actually going to solve the, the, the troubles of, of? The current traffic situation coming in and out?
Well, we're, we're having them wide, it's being widened because we did not want this developed as a common driveway. That would be less safe, so. kind of directed that this be done through the subdivisions now. During construction, there will obviously be traffic of heavy vehicles or workers, trucks, construction vehicles of various types. After that, when this is completed, you'll have the traffic generated by four to eight, four to eight or six to eight houses. I want to get us into a discussion about the rest of Black Horse Lane in a moment, because I think that's what this addresses, because we're going to make this up to snuff, to modern standards, but the rest of Black Horse Lane is not at modern standards, and I don't think we can necessarily ignore that, but I, I have some questions of counsel about that. We can discuss that further in a moment, but so you would just want to bear with us and we'll get into that discussion. Is there anybody else out in the attendees that wishes to speak on this? I noticed a lot of people who do live on Black Horse Lane here, so I see another question. Paul Canny, do you want to be promoted to, to ask your question, or should I just read it? Raise your hand on the screen there if you want to be promoted. Mr. Canny is saying, I'm glad that, I'm glad that Attorney Brodsky brought up the term wetlands, what is the applicant's plan to deal with the narrowing of Black Horse Lane near the causeway, which is only eleven feet wide and bordered on both sides by the Gulf River and wetlands with no option to widen the road? Well, again, that gets to our issue of whether, well, the issue of whether any improvements need to be done to the existing Black Horse Road to accommodate this. So Adam, I'll let you take a whack at that first.
Well, thanks, Chair Callan, I, I just want to point out that presently there are two buildings on seventy Black Horse Lane, house at eighty and ninety and ninety-four. So there will only be three additional houses to what presently exists on Black Horse Lane. So there's already traffic associated with presumably seventy, eighty, ninety, and ninety-four, so it's a three additional. Having said that, our traffic engineer evaluated all of those, all of those houses. And again, concluded that we're providing a very safe condition. And again, this is related to vehicular traffic, which was the question we were asked. With respect to the public portion of Black Horse.
Maybe I may just interrupt it, you know, Amy, we were talking about further questions to the fire department. I, you know, the fire department is giving us the opinion that the eighteen feet of pavement is sufficient. And getting around the cul-de-sac is sufficient or appears sufficient. I think we should ask the fire department about this eleven-foot-wide bottleneck as well. Because, you know, theoretically, the fire department and fuel trucks are going to, there are going to be more service with more houses getting through that choke point, so I think it's a fair question to ask if they're okay with that. Obviously, they're servicing five houses now, but, you know.
So Chair Callan, to answer the question you posed to me, we're, we're not proposing any improvements to the public portion of Black Horse Lane, that's a public way. If the town wishes to make improvements to Black Horse Lane, it has every opportunity to do so. That's not the responsibility of a private developer who is simply seeking approval of, of a improved existing way on private property. So while the residents and the board may have concerns regarding the existing conditions of Black Horse Lane, I'm talking about the public portion, that's not the responsibility of KD Custom Homes. And I, I can't speak to the specifics of wetlands in that area, again, that's not on our project site. And so again, if the, the town wishes to look at those issues, it has every right to do so.
Carolyn, I'm going to put the question to you, what is our authority with respect to the remainder of Black Horse Lane, since it's the obvious necessary access to the subdivision?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you're, if you're asking, you know, does the planning board have the ability to look at the way that is providing access ultimately to the subdivision, the, the answer is yes, you aren't just confined to looking at this extension of a private portion of Black Horse Lane, you can also look out to the, to the public portion. But within that, you also have to then consider what is within the applicant's control? You know, um, the public portion of Black Horse Lane, yes, that is the town's responsibility. If the town had perhaps some plans to make some improvements or to widen Black Horse Lane, and if we felt that the addition of these houses beyond the public portion, we're also going to benefit from those improvements, you know, could we talk about some form of mitigation? Yes, we could, but we can't obviously compel any private individual to make improvements to, to a public way.
Right, and, and as I mentioned earlier, the idea of improving a sidewalk would require easements over private property, because I don't think the layout of the existing Black Horse Lane is that wide. The actual public layout, and we couldn't compel that to happen, because various owners would have to grant it, first of all, so, but, you know, the, the town is creating a sidewalk fund, and I don't know if we can negotiate, I wouldn't say compel, negotiate contributions to that, if that again, I don't know if Black Horse Lane improvements are in the town's plans, I know they are looking to improve lots of roadways and sidewalks in town or create sidewalks, but maybe that's something we need to find out, but all right, but thank you for clarifying what we can and cannot do, I want the board to be clear.
Kevin has a comment.
Yeah, let me just see. All right, so Mr. Canny is following up with the comment, I would encourage the planning board to look at the condition of the road at that location. The new houses that have been built have already severely deteriorated the existing Black Horse Lane. With the additional construction vehicles for these three, four new houses, it will get further damaged the road, and that is the direct result of the proposed subdivision. And then I'll get to Mr. Sullivan's additional comment in a moment. So I'll just leave it at that for comment to the board of Mr. Canny's for the comment, but Kevin, go ahead, I'll give you the floor right now. You're muted, Kevin, you're muted.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up on the discussion with regard to sidewalk, and the applicant is if I'm, if I'm correcting here, and this is asking for a waiver of a sidewalk in the area that they are proposing to put in this sub-development road where sidewalks are required. And it's based on there not being a sidewalk they would connect to on the town-controlled portion of this. I would, I would just put forth, in light of the discussions throughout town with regard to sidewalks not being existing and needed, or the condition of existing sidewalks not being maintained so that they're usable. And the importance of access for pedestrians of all types. Whether it's people that live in the homes now and can make use of the road or future people that would live in the homes. And, you know, families involved and perhaps special needs of those families involved for the use of a sidewalk. Us saying a sidewalk could be waived without getting a payment or something in lieu of that being done here, I think is a non-starter. I think us having something to work with in a alternative fashion, if they weren't going to be made here, because it would be, create a little island of sidewalk not connected to the rest of the world, well then, that requirement, the only way I could possibly see that being waived is if the applicant was willing to make a payment in lieu of, that could be applied to a fund where it could be made in other parts of the town.
Is that doable, Carol? Hate to put you on the spot.
A payment in lieu is, is actually something that could be discussed. I know of other communities where when a sidewalk waiver is requested, that they will ask the DPW or the engineering department to make a calculation as to what the sidewalk length would be and what the cost of that would be. And in some instances, they do ask for an in-kind payment to a sidewalk fund. As of this moment, I don't know that the town has a specific sidewalk fund, I know that that is something that's on the agenda for the November special town meeting. But, but to answer Kevin's question, it is something that you could certainly, certainly ask for in this context.
What about a what about a condition that would say that you don't have to build a sidewalk now, but you have to leave the space for it? And if the town puts in a sidewalk on the rest of Black Horse Lane, then you will have to put in a sidewalk in the future? Could that, I mean, basically kicking, kicking that decision down the road without, you know, it would be impossible to compel anybody to do a modification of this subdivision in the future, but it would sort of be an open-ended commitment to construct one if, if the town actually constructs one on the rest of Black Horse Lane.
So I think that the short answer to your question is again, yes, a condition along those lines could certainly be fashioned. I do just kind of question the practicality of it, however, I don't know what is, what is ultimately planned here, you know, we're, we're looking at a couple of single single-family homes, and I imagine that there's going to be some sort of like homeowners association or something like that for the maintenance of the road. You know, I don't think we're going to necessarily be dealing with the applicant, the developer forever, let's put it that way. So if the town, right, so if the town doesn't put sidewalks in along the public portion of Black Horse Lane for, say, twenty years, who are we then going to twenty years from now? There's got to be some sort of entity that we know we can go to and say, now it's your turn to put in those sidewalks.
And Tom, I would maintain, if, if the town was going to make a fund, they would also create a priority for sidewalk improvements and/or installations throughout the town, and based on that priority, a payment in lieu could be used at a more beneficial location than serving, say, less than five homes or whatever the number is at this location, maybe for the equivalent cost, could we place at a location that could service tens of homes because of the critical nature of placing it there, so I, I understand your point, but I think there's a better way to frame it.
I, I, yeah, no, I hear you, and I'm just thinking out loud, but, you know, we're, we're also at a point, and I'm sure Mr. Brodsky is about to point out, that, you know, we do not have a fund yet. This program to develop for the sidewalks is brand new, and we don't even know if it will be funded come town meeting, so there's a lot of speculation at this point about it, so. Amy, let me go to Amy first, Adam.
Are there any members of the public that have yet to speak?
Well, we have one other comment that was by Mr. Sullivan again, does potential of detached garages allow for separated dwellings that we can rent it like the existing garage dwell? The answer to that question is generally, no. We do not generally speaking allow two dwelling units on one lot, however. We do have in existence now an accessory dwelling bylaw. And at the town meeting, there is a proposal to reform that provision, and so that would be a possibility. But that's through a special permit process. So there would have to be another public hearing of this nature, it would be done by the zoning board of appeals. But there is that potential that an accessory dwelling can be, could be done if it meets all the requirements of zone. So, but I don't see any other hands up from the public, so let me you got some first before I go to Adam, Amy?
I'm happy to have Adam go first.
Okay, Adam, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Callan, we're, we're not seeking approval of any of the structures that would be located within the subdivision, that's be a separate permitting process, we're simply seeking authorization of the subdivision road at this point. With respect to sidewalks, I just want to remind the board that we had several rationale for not proposing sidewalks. And not only is this a small subdivision, but we're trying to minimize additional impervious and alteration to land. And so that was another reason why we, we thought that, given the small size of the subdivision, that there's no need for sidewalks. The only time I've ever dealt with fee in lieu for sidewalks was in the town of Hanover, I believe it's expressly provided in its subdivision regulations. And I can't tell you whether your subdivision regulations speak to that issue. We're, we're happy to have any reasonable conversation with the planning board to resolve this matter. But I have no authority to, you know, agree to any, any mitigation, particularly if the mitigation is not even called for in the subdivision regulations, but happy to have a conversation with the board.
I, I didn't expect you to give an instant, instant approval of that, but you, I, I hope you and your client appreciate the fact that existing Black Horse Lane is substandard in a lot of respects. It wouldn't be built that way today. We all know that, so, you know, and to, and maybe that adding eight houses doesn't seem like a great burden, or there's already five of them there, but, you know, it is still a concern that this road is less than adequate in lots of respects, and there is that choke point as you enter your subdivision. And the choke point is constrained by, by, you know, the wetlands and the parks, so it is, it is a problem, and it's not something we can just cavalierly ignore, so.
No, Chair Callan, we recognize that, but Black Horse Lane is similar to many other public ways in Cohasset, which also provide safe access for a similar number of residences. So this is not an unusual condition in the town of Cohasset.
You know, we, we can argue this philosophy all that, the town once had wider frontages which would have dictated less houses being built in this subdivision that, that you're proposing, but here we are, you know, with fifty-foot frontage. And this is the consequence of.
So, so I, I'd like to, to say two things, one is that I read the Weston-Sanson documentation very carefully as it relates to the question of sidewalks, the width of the road, the question of runoff. Their language is very deliberate, more deliberate in fact than, in, in many cases that we've seen in the past. I think there's messaging there that we need to all take account of because of all the things that we've been talking about for the last forty-five minutes. This is not an easy situation. We know that there is expectations of more properties being developed. We know that we're going to have families that live there, and they're going to have children that need to get out to a place where they can get on the bus. So there's enough circumstantial evidence to build a case to say, we can't turn our back on this problem. And so I would make the recommendation as part of our continuing deliberations that we actually take some time to think this through further than we have, rather than feeling as if just because it isn't there, isn't, it, it's not going to be there, I think we have to take the position that it will be there in some form, and we have to make it as safe as possible, that's the first thing. The second thing is that I still request that we have at this moment, before we go any further in this discussion, a list of what we've agreed to, what we've deferred, and what we don't think we have any ability to do anything about, because we're going to lose track of the details.
Amy, I'm going to do that as soon as I, as I said, exhaust the public comment, and we have one other question that I'm going to read. And then I was going to summarize where, where I believe we are on the what waivers are still being requested and what issues are still outstanding. Patience, Mr. Greener, I'm going to assume you don't want to be promoted, he's asking, is the board considering this development plan in the context of additional development being pursued at the end of Black Horse Lane? Can the board give me an update on the other development going on at the end of Black Horse Lane, the Livingstone Development? And yes, Mr. Greener, we, we have talked about this, mentioned this occasionally. This subdivision is for four houses, one existing, three to be built. The Livingstone, the, the rest of the street has three, no, two, three at the moment? Three houses or two houses, somebody help me here with that.
Chair Callan, Seventy has a house and a barn, and then there are single-family houses. And then there are single family houses on each of eighty, ninety, and then you mentioned ninety-four. So there's a misconception here that um. Mr. Danuno and KD Custom Homes is proposing to max out its development with the three division additional lots. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that there's no more land to be developed. If the planning board approves this subdivision road plan, that's under the care and custody of KD Custom Homes.
Okay, so, so. This this subdivision is for four houses, one existing, three new, that's it.
Correct.
There are two other existing houses today. There is a proposal at least for one more. The planning board is being sued about that. And whether there could be further subdivision, I can't comment. I'm not sure that there is the ability to further subdivide it beyond. Three, a total of three lots, there's two existing, one is being proposed. So that would leave a total of eight. Is there the potential for nine or ten? I can't tell you that, but it certainly, I don't think would be more than ten. As a result, you know, this this road is going to deal with a lot of frontage problems. Uh, maybe, maybe, maybe not, because it's still a private road. Um, but we do have the potential for, you know, a total of at least eight houses in this area. Possible. Um, and Ms. Faulkner, I'm gonna also assume at the moment you don't want to be promoted. FYI, there are eleven homes currently on the public portion of Black Horse Lane, also at the choke point. That has been referred to at the midpoint of Black Horse Lane, there is also a large culvert under the road that is critical to water flow from two sources. Twice daily tidal rise and fall and stormwater drainage from South Main Street. It has collapsed before. And caused massive flooding to the area, the additional construction trucks and the future construction cars and ongoing. Cars for new residents will cause significant stress, I think it is critical that this be examined by town engineering and stormwater and other specialists. I, Darren, are you still with us? So. The loads of cul-de-sacs, as we were talking about, the stormwater drains in this subdivision can be determined. Uh, and I presume that the load capabilities of the culvert at the choke point can be determined. And and again, I, and I know this is not on, technically not on your property, Mr. Bratski, your client's property, but it's. You know. Any, any load to that cul-de-sac is all coming from the development on this property and your other client's property. Um, and I don't know that we can just ignore that and and need to have that looked at. Your, your. Your pipes and your subdivision are gonna are gonna be, are gonna bear the loads, that's fine, but you know. The critical entry point to the subdivision and these other properties. Has a, Ms. Faulkner's right, a critical piece of infrastructure.
Chair Callahan, I have no knowledge regarding a culvert in the public portion of Black Horse Lane. If it has been damaged in the past, I don't know what caused that damage. I have no idea whether its condition is attributable to the construction that's occurred throughout Black Horse Lane over the years. Um, I imagine if one of our contractors damages something, the contractor would be responsible for it. It would be prudent for the town engineer to review that culvert to make sure that it's. Uh, it's sound, uh, that culvert could be. Ten years old, that it could be a hundred years old and perhaps would need to be replaced in any event. Um, I I don't know how to address the comment other than to 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 again say that if. Uh, if any of our contractors damage any property, that that contractor would be responsible to address it.
If there's no homeownership, if there's no HOA, can you do that? Who's responsible?
That's a public, it's a public way, it's a public.
Only on the public way because all the other property, if the if the homeowners don't currently have an HOA. They don't have any, they don't have any protection for the a contractor working on your site tearing up the road. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Chair Callahan, I I don't understand the question.
Say, Tom, say that again.
Are you going to have, Adam, are you, is your client going to have an HOA for your subdivision?
We we think we're going to address the access issue via easements and we're not contemplating a homeowners association. Uh, for this this subdivision at the present time.
So then the people that buy the houses will understand. That if there's damage from somebody building a house on the road that they currently live on. That that they will, there will be no compensation for the repair of the road.
I'm not sure that that's correct, Ms. Glassmore, the point being is that if if a contractor during any construction project. Be it on our property or be it on any of the existing homes caused damage, presumably the contractor would be liable for that. Again, the culvert we're speaking to is part of the public way, it's it's a public street, the responsibility of which belongs to the. Town, I don't know how the town deals with instances where, uh, you know, trucks damage public storm features. But. That's the best I can do to answer that question.
But I think the answer is, in fact, that the homeowners cannot turn around and sue the contractor. Who builds a house on a private way, tears the road up, and then leaves.
Sorry, I don't understand the question, which.
Okay, so it, this is hypothetical, in a in a private way context, if houses are being built. And the road is getting broken, who pays for the road being broken when a new house is built?
So we're envisioning to maintain the uh the private portion of Black Horse Lane. Uh, with maintenance obligations in the cross easements that will be granted to each of the homeowners. So the homeowners collectively will be responsible for the maintenance of the private portion of Black Horse Lane. And those maintenance obligations will be found within the cross easements.
Thank you.
All right, I have one other public comment again, this is uh Mr. Canning again, following up on his earlier question. There were two houses and one barn previously at that end of Black Horse Lane, now there will be nine to ten, including the two that were just built. The four for Mr. Danuno and the former Barnard Estate plus barn, if that lawsuit is successful, by any measure, that's a significant increase. Again, I. There's, there's, there's three there now, there's three more that would come by this subdivision and depending on how. Mr. Livingstone or whoever now owns it. Is whether he's successful in a lawsuit or tries to further subdivide. Yes, there is the potential, there's potential at least for eight. Seven or eight and perhaps more, but it's. Uh, again, I'm somewhat speculating because I don't know how much further division can subdivision can be done on the other side of that. Uh, this proposed way. And if you want to ask if that's a significant increase, yes, it is, but that is a function in my mind that. In nineteen sixty-nine, the town decided to abandon suburban, typical suburban frontages and go to urban fifty foot frontages all over town. Which allows for more lots to be built in a given area, because you only need to get fifty feet out to a roadway. So, uh, that's, you know, there's nothing we can do about that. That was a decision made a long time ago, and that's the bylaws that exist now at the times of all of these applications for development. Anyway, so, let me try to summarize what we have here. I have a few notes about conditions and things we've put out, that cedar lane, this this liability issue, I have some ideas about that. We have the request of a waiver of no sidewalks. We have a request for a waiver.
We we have a list of the five waivers that we're requesting. And I know Ms. Hudson provided that in an email to the town planner, I can read the five waivers if you.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, indulge me for, indulge me for a minute. For the road width. All right, we have. The layout would normally be forty feet, they're proposing twenty feet, and that's all on your property, correct? It's not on Livingstone's property at all?
So, so, um.
The twenty foot.
Correct, it's it's on our property, it's a thirty foot layout, but we're having eighteen feet of pavement.
Okay.
So, and and it's section three twenty-five dash twenty-six point C.
Right. Twenty-five is twenty-six. I'm just, I'm just taking. Glance at width. Forty feet, all right, and then there's a request for a waiver for the slope of the road.
I believe that's section three twenty-five dash twenty-six D grade. The street grade at the cul-de-sac turnaround shall not exceed three percent. And we do have a portion of the cul-de-sac which have a grade in excess of three percent.
Darren, any comment or thoughts on that?
I know, yeah, we had applied that as a resolved comment, um. I think, yeah, it's the maximum grade was noted by the applicant's designer to be four percent. Um, and the justification was significant. Earthwork and retain, potential retaining walls needed to actually achieve the three percent grade based on existing slopes. Across that area, so we didn't. Not that that was a reasonable request.
The pavement you're proposing is eighteen feet, correct?
Yes, sir, it's section three twenty-five dash twenty-six E, which is cross section. Streets shall be constructed in accordance with the standards as shown on the typical cross section. And the proposed rate differs from that figure one i- in the regulations. One, the width of the paved travelway will be eighteen feet, whereas twenty-six is required. No sidewalks are proposed when two sidewalks are required. No grass strips will be proposed where there's a two uh, two foot, three inch grass strip required between the curb and the sidewalk. And I believe there's a uh requirement, cut and fill slopes proposed to be one to one for cut and ledge. Two to one for vegetated reinforced slopes and three to one for grass slopes. And uh, the regulations require a three to one maximum slope, so those are all under. Three twenty-five dash twenty-six E, which is the cross section and figure one and figure two. Uh, within the subdivision regulations.
Went over earlier that all the comments about waivers on construction materials is all being taken off. Table because you're gonna do what the regulations require, correct?
Correct.
Any other waiver?
Yes, sir, three twenty-five dash twenty-seven A four A. Catch basins shall be located in pairs, one on each side of the roadway. At all low low points or sag curves in the roadway. At intervals of not more than four hundred feet on continuous grades. And we're proposing three catch basins on one side, the low side of the street. Yes, and sidewalks are separately addressed in three twenty-five dash thirty-six. Again, uh, no sidewalks are being proposed, so that's. Uh, addressed both in three twenty-five dash twenty-six E, the cross section, as well as in three twenty-five dash thirty-six. Fundamentally, there are four waivers, but technically, since sidewalks are also dealt with separately, um, there are a total of five.
All right, does the board understand all of that? And then additionally, the board still needs to hear from the sewer commission about the sufficiency of the sewer main that's proposed. Apparently, am I correct that we do not have to receive comment from the water department at this point? Because you are going to put in an eight inch main? And we do also still want to hear some further clarification from the fire department.
Chair Callahan, with respect to sewer, we'd have to apply for a sewer permit and connection, that would typically be done in that process. That's why that kind of approval is typically a condition of approval. And so I suggest that that be treated as a condition of approval, just like we need any other approval.
Wouldn't hurt to ask.
And in fact, I'll I'll ask Ms. Hudson whether whether we've had communications with the sewer department.
Yes, actually, I sent the original plans and the revised plans to Mark Cofflin. Um, I have not heard back, however, we do have to go for a sewer extension permit. So during the permit process, we will address anything that the sewer department would like us to do. Um, so what we're proposing at the moment is based on the existing conditions of the existing two inch main, main present. And also, I uh. Uh, I sent an email with the plans to Brian Joyce, um, I asked. I talked with the secretary at the water department, there were no comments and they have not provided any letters. Um, that was the reason why I was originally proposing the six inch duct line. Water main extension because it's what is there and I haven't had any further clarification from the water department. However, we will just simply go by the regulations and propose what the regulations require. And the water department can tell us otherwise later.
Uh, we have two more comments by Ms. Faulkner, who is on Black Horse Lane. FYI, the culvert, and again, this is the culvert at the choke point. Is tidal with large amounts of water going into the salt marsh, then draining back out four times per day. Any damage would cause immediate and significant flooding to the area, including to several homes, this is an infrastructure issue that needs to be considered. Any builder who damaged it and said would repair would be too little, too late in taking responsibility to fix it, flooding is immediate. I am raising this issue as a critical one that the board addressed before permitting additional construction. And her second comment is, I'm requesting the board review all of Black Horse Lane for acceptable access, including its culvert. We're in a debt, certainly appreciate those concerns, I share them, but there's so much, only so much legally we can do. Uh, and that's why I asked the question of Attorney Murray earlier, what we can and cannot do. We 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 can't have them build a sidewalk down existing Black Horse Lane because it involves taking of other people's property. Um, we can't, Carolyn, correct me if I'm wrong, force them to pave all of Black Horse Lane or widen Black Horse Lane. Again, it's not their property, um. As far as the culvert goes, um. I I mean, I I again, it's it's, I'm assuming this part is not on their property. And let's say we. Found out tomorrow that. It's failing, it would likely fail under additional traffic loads, you know, what. Carolyn, what what can we have this applicant do with it other than to? I mean, we're gonna have to have some, we're gonna have a performance bond for this subdivision. Perhaps that can deal with a contingency, but other than setting up a contingency fund. Or some kind of mitigation fund and and. An indemnification obligation upon all these future property owners, I'm not sure what legally we can do to address that issue. Uh, until unfortunately after the fact. And correct me if I'm wrong.
One, one thought might be here, um. To have someone on behalf of the town, whether it is someone from um DPW. Or whether it's even our peer reviewer from Weston and Sampson, someone go out and take a look at this. Choke point, this culvert, you know, and I'm thinking of this sort of akin to um other projects, what that might involve blasting, for example. And you would have like a pre-blast survey where it'd be documented, whatever the condition is, say, of the of the properties. And then. If any damage results, um, as a result of of the blasting, you know, we know. What the condition was of the area prior. So we could kind of mimic that process and have some kind of a, an assessment done. Of this culvert before construction begins. Um, I think the board, I I don't necessarily think that the performance bond. Um, necessarily is the um, is going to cover this, the performance bond would mostly be. For the the construction of the extension of Black Horse Lane and any utilities in it. Um, we might want to include a. Um, we might want to include a condition then in the subdivision that would. Specifically require some sort of additional funds or a bond be provided to, um. In the event that, you know, the, the culvert is damaged in the course of construction. There would be some means for the town to, uh, recoup money for the purposes of making those repairs.
Uh, obviously, Adam, you won't have opportunity to speak to your client, but your gut reaction to that, a bond?
W- w- we'll, we'll entertain any reasonable thought, I, I don't have any knowledge whether that culvert is in disrepair or not. So I, I think having the town inspected. Um, uh, may be a good idea.
But I don't, I don't, I, I don't, I don't see how it would be fair to hold us to that, and how would you determine that it's. Trucks from our construction, not the continuing construction on the other two homes. Delivery trucks, furniture trucks.
Yeah, I, I.
That assessment isn't, isn't really a fair assessment, there, there's other factors.
The additional, the additional load that will be put on this culvert is going to come from all the development on that side of Black Horse Lane. Both your development and Mr. Livingston's. And, you know, I think I've commented that the two of you need to sit down and talk about these things, and I think you still do, uh, all due respect. Um, because.
We've spoken, I mean, we, they.
Alright, well, you know what, I, I, I think, I think you're, you're, you're. Adding development to this area that hasn't existed for a long, long time, it's for a long time, it's been what, two houses? Uh, I think, maybe three. And now it's potentially eight. And I think you have to be cognizant of that, that that creates certain demands on this critical culvert.
Right, but it's not, it's not fair to put us through the wringer when you just pass two other new homes being built. With none of these requirements.
So Chair Calhan, it's Adam Brodsky, a- again.
Yeah, and then.
There's, there's no present evidence that that culvert is in disrepair. So I think if that there is some concern on the town's part, that would be appropriate to have the. Town engineer or the DPW take a look at that culvert. Because this, this may not be, you know, this may not be a real world issue.
No, I understand that, I, I, but I think, uh, Attorney Murray's suggestion of doing something similar that you would do in a blasting situation makes a lot of sense.
Yes, having the town inspect and document the condition of it.
Correct, and then we'd have something, we'd have something to measure that against. And if you were open to the idea of a reasonable bond for that, that might. Al- allay can some concerns, but as far as Ms. Faulkner's comments go, unfortunately, there isn't gonna be anything we can do until after the fact. Because you don't own it. And planning board can't control what the town does and what money the town spends.
Right, a- and I, I should say that, that, you know, the town has an independent obligation to maintain its public roads and culverts. And, you know, towns don't do that. Um, that because they failed to properly maintain it, it shouldn't be the, you know, the.
I understand.
Property owner's responsibility. With respect to a bond, I don't think we can get a specific bond to bond over a future potential claim with respect to a. Pup piece of public infrastructure, but.
We'll, we'll have to maybe be creative in thinking about that further. Alright, I see Mr. Mr. Greener is also, once again, commenting, can the board cite a recent example in class that. Where this type of development has been done on a street like Black Horse Lane? Similar dimensions slash with the road going from eleven or so homes to nineteen, thanks. Um. Trying to think, where, where have there been newer subdivisions in town? Well, we don't do a lot of subdivisions, Mr. Greener, because essentially as a function of the fifty-five percentage. We don't see them as much as we might normally in other suburban towns, and where there has been subdivision. Work done in more modern times, recent times, it's been on virgin land. Off Beechwood Street, or, you know. Fair Oaks Lane goes back, I think, to the eighties, but, you know, again, virgin land off the main street. I don't know that there are a lot of examples, uh, I can't think of one off the top of my head. Uh. Lambert's Lane, you know, Lambert's Lane up by the golf course. Has newer houses than Lambert's Lane down by Fall Street, so that was extended at one point in time. Uh, not only to accommodate the golf club, but to accommodate some newer houses that were built in the eighties and nineties. That might be an example, um, and Lambert's Lane is not. You know, a very wide road, I think that might be an example, but it was a long time ago, we, we don't see this all the time, and. Um. You know, again, I think it's, my personal view is it's, it's a function of some of the bylaws and decisions that were made decades ago to change those bylaws. Um. Philip Faulkner says, I suggest that town DVW examine the culvert as the sewer line sits on top of the culvert. And in order to accommodate the height of the sewer in the culvert. There's a chunk taken out of the culvert, okay, so. Your, your sewer line has to cross that, cross that choke point at some point, um. Has any thought been given as to where, how, how, was there a sewer line there now? I assume there's a sewer line serving houses.
Beaver connecting to an existing sewer line.
Exactly, so.
And do, did you, and do you know how it crosses the culvert, does it cross under it, over it? Anybody know?
I, I don't know, it's a pressure, it's a pressure sewer line that eventually goes to gravity. Um, so. But we are not going to be touching that existing sewer.
I don't suppose you are, but it's, it does cross this choke point as well at the same, at some point. Um, uh, Mr. Faulkner's telling me it crosses over the culvert. Um. Alright, does anybody else on the board have any concerns other than the remaining, um. Opinions we may need from other town departments and the, um.
Remember to talk to the fire department.
Yes, I know, that, that's, I just said to the other town departments, there's two, fire and sewer. And sewer, Adam is suggesting that they will condition what the main will be, and we can just defer to their decision. That may be the solution to that. Um, and then the waivers that. Mr. Brodsky just said, between Mr. Brodsky and I had just outlined that is still outstanding, are there any other issues? Uh, that the board members see in, in light of all the comments that have been made this evening and the commentary. Yeah, you, you.
Um, I don't have any, what I really would like to see. Is I'd like to see the documentation, I'd like to see Mr. Brodsky's letter that he wrote that has the waivers outlined. And I feel at this point, um, in the past with some of these, um. Third-party, um, comments that we get back, we do get back a response, and I know that, um. Carmen only had this for a day, not even, if it was just today, she got it, I would like to see. Back their response and how they're going to address each of those issues in my hand, so I can read that. Before we make any kind of decision. Um, I'm sorry if that seems like it's additional work, but I feel like I'm not ready to make. A decision on this tonight, based on what I'm verbally hearing, I would like to see documentation, so those are my only comments, thank you.
The, the other thing we were expecting, I just popped into my head, we're expecting the manufacturer's data on the. On the load bearing of those stormwater pipes. That's a technical thing that Ms. Hudson can get to Darren.
So Chair, Chair Calhan, um, we don't need to provide that any further because we're substituting. The reinforced concrete pipe.
No.
The plastic.
No, I think there was still, alright, you're, alright, you're correct.
A- a- and, and if I might, we're, we're happy to provide. Again, a further response with the additional information to the planning board, which summarizes all of the points that we've made. Um, the list of waivers was emailed to, uh, Ms. There. Uh, earlier today, we'll, we'll put that also in the letter so that you have in one place, you know, our responses. Um, to make sure that you have a nice clean record from which to make a decision.
Yeah, I mean.
I would like to, I would like to clarify. Uh, be, that I don't think there's any ambiguity with respect to the fire department. We provided a swept path analysis plan to both the planning board and to the fire department. And the fire department in its September twenty-eighth email. Made it clear that we have reviewed the swept path analysis that was submitted to us. And believe that is sufficient to accommodate the turning radius of our fire apparatus. They go on to say that when the road is marked, they're gonna do an onsite inspection. But we've demonstrated to them with an engineered plan. That the cul-de-sac is going to accommodate the largest piece of equipment, so I just wanted to make clear that. There's no ambiguity with respect to that point, and we're not seeking to. After the fact, trying to do something in the field, we've demonstrated on a survey plan. That is stamped that we meet the requirement, so I just wanted to clarify.
No, I, I appreciate that, and, and by the way, that comment also. Said that we needed to clarify something about the hydrants with the water department, so there is something we want to hear from the water department, if not about the main.
We have that information, Chair Calhan, if you want to know about the hydrants.
You've got something from the water department about it?
Ms. Hudson, I believe that we have information with, with respect to, I think the question was freezing of hydrants?
Um, the, I, I believe the question from last meeting was, who maintained the hydrants, and the answer was, uh. The town, the town's water department maintains the hydrants.
Well, I, I, I had it up on my screen and then I did, I closed it, so I thought the fire department was. Suggesting we just confirm something with the water department. Um.
Only questions.
But, but, well, just about the fire department, you, you heard at the beginning earlier in the meeting. Uh, Amy had expressed some frustration about the content of the letter that it wasn't thorough enough. And I asked her to put together some additional questions that she might have, I don't think that's. Uh, out of line to do that, um. Our usual comments from the fire department are rather short. Sometimes they are to the point, and I know what you're saying, that this one is to the point, but. Uh, I, I wouldn't, I think it's fair enough to, uh, have Amy, uh. Clarify, clarify that, those comments and ask additional questions if she, if she has them. Kevin?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate, um, the point to update the, um. Uh, documentation to include the drawing. I want to see on the drawing where these sewer basins are gonna be located. And where they will be vacated to. Um, by way of engineered structures, you have one shown on your plan now. You're proposing to put engineered structure, I believe it's called a re- a, a catchment basin, okay? And then Attorney Brodsky, when you spoke of, yes, they would be vacated from their new locations to the west side of the road. That doesn't make any sense to me, because if I look at that drawing correctly, the west side of the road has a higher elevation than the east side. So let's get some clarification on these drawings from an engineer, and that they're reflected to us. As they would be built, so that we as a board can see it. From the drawing standpoint, what's proposed, and we can. Um, make a decision based on that, I don't like the idea of. Just having conversations be the demarcation as to what will be done, I want to see things on drawings for what's proposed. If it's gonna be a waiver and how it will be built.
Yeah, I agree, and I mentioned earlier that that additional. Uh, catch area for that ca- new catch basin would have to be shown on plan.
Chair Calhan, we're, we're, we will provide that information.
Yeah, alright, uh, Darren.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I was just gonna flag this same issue, just based on that new addition. Cause that was, that waiver change happened this afternoon, so we have not seen a plan with the revised stormwater. Which. Eliminate, well, I guess they're, they're requesting to go to meet the subdivision requirements and not. Need the waiver by having catch basins at every four hundred feet, but we did have comments about the pairing as well, because there, the road is partially crowned in one area, so. Uh, you have seen this on the plan would be part of our review. Um, so we would just want to look through that stormwater revised.
Yeah, if I under- if I understand the regulation, we're, we're supposed to have catch basins opposite each other on each side of the road, may just want to put them on one side of the road. So I just, you know, want to make sure we have your thoughts on whether that will be adequate, and if, obviously, if there's a place where the. Road is crowned at a point where there's a catch base, and then logic would tell you you'd need one on each side, but. Uh, if that's for you to, to, uh, review and let us know about. Alright, um, I don't see any other comments from the public at this time, um. I don't know, I, I don't know if the board wants to deliberate any of these issues tonight, I'd kind of wait for Mr. Brewer to be here as well. At our next, uh, when we continue this. And we can get into deliberation of the specific waivers, especially, especially since you, you know, we requested that they be. Re- summarized for us in a condensed form of what waivers are left, uh, that are being asked for. Uh, so unless anybody on the board has any other comments, uh. I'll look for continuance for this, um. We are not meeting this month anymore, I thought we were, but not.
You're meeting next week.
We are meeting next week.
You're meeting next week, and then the next date after that is number, November fifteenth.
November fifteenth, right, we're taking the first off, that's right, um.
I won't be next year, next week. So, I won't.
I know, I, I don't think, I, I think the November, what's, what's on our agenda for the fifteenth at this point? Anything?
Um, off the top of my head, you have two new applications, um, and then I believe. Uh, two or five Atlantic was continued to the fifteenth.
November fifteenth would have to be, one of the two new ones, are they? Large homes or?
No, uh, they're both special permits, site plan review.
Um, Jesus, alright.
One of which is, um, two plus an eight James Lane.
And then after that, um, we're not meeting again until the, I suppose, the twenty-ninth? No?
Uh, the next date after that would be. December, I'm not a hundred percent sure what day in December.
What's your pleasure, Adam, I.
I'd like to have a meeting.
Fifteen, if we are doing two site plan and special permit reviews in the village, uh. Uh, on the fifteenth, those are both gonna absorb some time.
So we, we had a lot of additional time for this meeting to attempt to complete the peer review. Process, and obviously, we were unable to do that. So we're falling well behind any anticipated schedule for review of this project. And as you know, we keep continuing dates in, in other forums to accommodate this. If there's any chance, uh, for the planning board to meet prior to the fifteenth. Uh, we can be prepared to prevent the, present the additional information. Um, to defer us to December is.
I hear you, we, we, we. We have had a busy meeting scheduled, we have our town meeting Monday the thirteenth. I was, because of the placement of the zoning articles, we very well might go to Tuesday the fourteenth as well. Uh, and then meeting, our regular meeting fifteenth, so we have decided to take November first off, but, um. November eighth is already occupied by some other event that we have already scheduled, um. So, you know, it, it would have to be the first. And this would be the only item on the first. It's the only thing we can accommodate at this point.
Yes, sir, we, we will happily to take the, the first, if the planning board will accommodate us.
Is that all right with everyone? Hello? Amy, Kevin, Deirdre?
Yes, yes.
This will be the only matter, and we'll have, you know, we'll need to get into deliberations and making some decisions, specific decisions on these waiver requests.
Could you say that again, Tom, I didn't hear what you said.
We're gonna, we're going to meet on, this will be the only item on the first, because we had nothing else on the agenda at this.
October first.
And, um, we will on that night. Need to deliberate and make decisions on the waiver requests, and then. You know. I, you know, whether we can have draft conditions ready to decide, you know, that might be pushing it, because we have these decisions on these waivers, but we can certainly. Have council start working on a, a draft decision, on draft conditions and things, but. Um. You know, we are gonna have to deliberate those as well, so. The first is open for that, and if, if everybody's comfortable with that, then I'll move that we continue this to November first at six thirty.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, Tom Calhan, I?
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Alright, thank you, so, again, if there's still any issues to resolve with Darren that. Still any issues to resolve with Darren, that, you know, revised drawings, get them to him as soon as possible. Uh, I think it behooves us that if we're going to have the town engineer look at the culvert, we do that ASAP. And, um. Like, you know, again, Adam, just get us a newer short summary with. Short justifications for your, for the remaining waiver requests.
Thank you, well, we're happy to do so.
Okay. Alright, thank you, and thank you for all the members of the public for being here tonight, and we'll see you on November first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, good evening.
Alright. Alright, for the board, we have one set of minutes, I think. Cassandra?
Uh, that I'm not sure, Angela hasn't been forwarding them to me.
Didn't see any, Tom. I didn't see any.
Now, let me, let me.
You get them?
Yeah, I did. Don't know. Like, no, she sent me something for September twentieth, and I told her we'd already done them, so.
Yeah, we did though.
I just want to make sure. Well, please have these approved, no, nine twenty, we did those, so, okay, so we don't have any minutes. Uh, just a quick update on zoning, I've met with the select board last night. The zoning articles are going to be moved to the very end. Uh, there's lots of pros and cons of that either way. And I just said that if, you know, if somebody calls for a quorum at the end of the night, we have to be prepared to go forward on Tuesday night, so. We'll have to see what we're going to do, uh, you know, we'll have to just see what happens about that. Uh, but the planning, the select board, there were only three members in attendance last night, they voted three to zero. To, uh, recommend both articles, so. That's the only update I had, and, and the reason we couldn't again, November eighth of this meeting is because November eighth, the. Zoning board, zoning bylaw committee is going to meet to have a presentation by our consultant. On the. Uh, housing choice, uh, zoning proposal that they have for us. You know, the, the actual land where the, the properties that would be covered into the overlay zoning district. And a reminder too, that on October twenty third, a Monday, that's when the zoning bylaw committee is. Having a public forum that the selectman are conducting on the zoning articles. So I have nothing else. Anybody else have anything to bring up, discuss? Nope.
Other than I'll, I'll let you know, Tom, once I have a sense of the surgery thing.
Yeah, yeah, I hope so, um.
I apologize to everyone, I'm apologizing at work, it has to be done.
We will be, we will be sympathetic, we will not make you zoom from your hospital bed.
I could do it, I'll be lying there, but we'll see what happens. Thank you, thank you, Tom.
We're not, we're not that cool, so. Uh, Carolyn, anything else? Any updates for us, or nothing?
No.
Alright, then, um.
I was just going to, um, make a, uh, mention of, I don't know if you saw my email earlier, Justin had prepared a. A document in regards to, um, just an explanation on why we hadn't gone back to, uh. Hybrid meetings fully. I didn't know if you, I know that a lot of board members had had questions and concerns about it. Didn't know if you wanted to have a discussion at all, um.
It's a personnel issue.
It's a personnel.
The, the, the issue, folks, is we, we have machines, obviously.
Yeah, they're bodies.
We don't have the bodies to run them, Justin can't work every night, and the school department has its person, and they work one night a week, and. You know, we'd have. Select board on Tuesdays, plannings every other Wednesday, so like, you know, zoning once a month on a Tuesday, there's all kinds of. You know, there's machines in. At least three different places, the town hall auditorium, the senior center, and the school department, but there's just not the bodies to actually run the machine. And make sure it all works smoothly, and I guess training any one of us quickly is out of the question, but. That, therein is the problem, correct?
Yes.
And I, if I understood too, there's some, there's some legal issues with who they can allow to do the owl thing. The owl program. Cassandra, am I correct on that?
I think it's more of a just, you don't want. Just a bunch of different people using town equipment. And lending it out. I, I don't know how much of legality it is, um, just a concern for the equipment.
In other words, if you break it, you bought it. And I assume that machine up at Willcat Commons is pretty expensive. Um, so we have to continue this way for the foreseeable future, but, um. You know, so be it. Nothing, nothing we can do about it. I, I hope that the state is sympathetic, because I thought I heard they were going in the direction of. You know, telling everybody to go hybrid. And, uh, you know, at, at least to get back to in person, but to also have the hybrid capabilities, so. They can't mandate that to us without people, so. We'll see what happens. Thank you for bringing that up, though.
Yeah, I just, I know that there's been a lot of questions and wanted to, uh, kind of put. Words to paper, um, to visualize it for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's so, it was much nicer seeing you all live, and I can throw little pieces of paper at you when you're out of order, which I can't do in this far. I can only. Yell at my screen, so. Um, and, and likewise towards me, I, I, I won't have anything thrown at me.
No, it's not throwing things at you, Tom, it's moving the microphone closer to your mouth, so he can hear.
Yeah, you know what, I guess, I guess this little notebook really doesn't have a powerful mic and speaker.
You know, Tom, you could actually buy a lapel mic that's tiny and just put it on your shirt.
I used to, I have one, and I used to have it, and it didn't, and that didn't work either.
Well, they've, they've modernized them.
If it's any help, it does seem like. The only time we were having issues hearing you is when you turned your head.
Yeah, I have to go and read something, I can't, I don't have it.
If you're facing us, you're good.
Most of the times, you don't want to hear what I have to say anyways. Alright, so, um, make a motion to adjourn. Somebody second that? All in favor, I'll make, by the way, make sure Clark. Um, is reminded to listen to the tape of this.
Uh, he's cannot go to this.
Disqualified.
Oh, he is?
Yeah, he, he did mullionize, um, from the one meeting that he missed, but you're only allowed to miss one. So now that it's two, he's out of it.
He's out of it. Alright, so, and, and as far as, I, I mean, for the first, I mean, I think you've. You've seen things in the Weston and Sampson comments and heard some things tonight. Carolyn, do you want to start? Writing a decision and, and you and Cassandra in some conditions, and then we can take our votes. And, and perhaps be able to look at at least a draft, I mean, with some condition ideas that I've jotted down to myself here. That I did, but I, I don't, I don't, because I don't have the time in the next two weeks to actually start working on a draft, so.
I've actually already started on a draft, um, so I have like a basic template, um, that I could send to you tomorrow, Carolyn.
That'd be fine, thank you.
Yeah, and, and, and anybody who has some specific things they would want conditioned.
Well, I, 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 I've, I've got that sidewalk, if, if, if there's a decision to do something. That we, the app, where, whereby the applicant wants a waiver for not doing that. We need to have alternatives.
Tom, can I just, we're starting to actually deliberate here, and I.
Yeah, 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 so let's be careful about that.
Yes. But duly noted, Kevin, yes.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
And Cassandra, if you could reach out, I suppose through Chris. To see what we need to do to get the culvert looked at. Number one. And. And what was the other one that just popped in my head?
Not sewer job, not sewer department, Tom.
No, 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 no. Uh, never mind, it'll, it'll pop in my head, so. Um, alright. Motion to adjourn, somebody second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor, Tom Callahan, I?
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you.
See you next week.
Good night, everyone.